Would you please rise for the pledge?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gavron.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McComber.
Here.
Rowland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the regular meeting that was held on July 5th, 2016, were distributed to prior council, or to council prior to this meeting. Are there any corrections or amendments to these minutes? See, none is their motion to approve.
So moved.
Set.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The minutes are approved. Kay, I must say you did a wonderful job of capturing the discussion that evening. That could not have been easy.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
It wasn't so, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's nice to hear that.
Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
There is no correspondence.
Thank you. Moving quickly into our official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. I just want to just touch on very lightly a couple of items here before reading a proclamation. And I just want to say that Brian O'Connell and Daryl Stockburger and I participated in another interesting session today on regional water issues. And it was, the group was chaired by Craig Stowe, the longtime mayor of Sylvania, and also longtime Wood County, or Wood County, Lucas County Commissioner Pete Gurkin. Pete would be offended if I, but in any event, it was an interesting meeting, a good meeting, and I think actually a productive meeting. It was Tim Brown's actually first day on the job as president of TMCOG, and Tony Reams was there as well. So unlike some other meetings we've had on regional water issues, this ended up being a very positive meeting and saw a number of possible scenarios and so forth. At least it opens the door for some, I think, some constructive discussions because they're finally getting some facts out on the table and some folks really started to speak up a little bit. And I think fortunately Toledo is coming to the realization, because I put the question to them today about needing, really, it's one of the, I can't think of another major city like this that is only have, has one inflow or intake situation like Toledo has had for forever. And so I think they would be receptive at some point even to consider a second intake there, which I think would serve the citizens there and the whole region well down the line. Also, I should mention that, of course, as I indicated to you and I shared with you my statement to the Wood County Commissioners this last Thursday, I thought we had a very productive session. It was, they asked good questions. They asked the kind of questions, I think, if any of us had been sitting in their chair, we would be asking to try to clarify, to learn a little bit more about the situation, even though they've had the letter since last March. And, but I think they, they were satisfied with the answers, and some of them have told me individually and so forth, that they should be moving ahead on our solar project tomorrow. So I really think that time was well spent and, and I sense from each one of them that at least they're, they feel that they've, their questions were answered. And I thought they were appropriate kinds of questions. So with that, I just wanted to offer a proclamation tonight. It's an interesting situation here that we have. I think some of you are in the audience, I know all of you are certainly aware of our Efficiency Smart Program and other efforts we've been making in the area of sustainability. Enhancing sustainability goes hand in glove with what we've been talking about here with the solar program and having one of the largest solar fields in the entire state of Ohio. But we've also been working very closely with Columbia Gas. Of course, they seem like they're new residents in our community, and I'll be introducing a person from Columbia Gas who's been, she told me tonight, she's been spending so much time here in our community, working with Neocles, Leontes, and others, that maybe she should even take up residence here on a part-time basis. But I'll get more to Jill McKinn in just a moment here. But this is a proclamation that, whereas the city of Bowling Green strives to be a sustainable energy leader through energy-efficient programming such as Efficiency Smart Program provided by the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities and the Bowling Green Neighborhood Home Energy Audit Program provided by Columbia Gas. And whereas by participating in the Bowling Green Neighborhood Energy Audit Program, citizens of Bowling Green have the opportunity to save money on utilities and insulation projects, conserve energy, and to help voluntarily reduce greenhouse gas emissions by reducing their annual natural gas usage. And whereas Bowling Green residents who participate will not only make a positive environmental impact, but will also enjoy savings on future energy bills and in many cases, have a more comfortable and quieter home. And whereas as part of the city's continuing efforts to promote energy efficiency and environmental stewardship in our community, residents are encouraged to participate in the home energy audit program and installation of qualified energy efficiency improvements. Now therefore, I, Richard Edwards, Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, endorse the Neighborhood Home Energy Audit Program and encourage the citizens of Bowling Green to participate by having a home energy audit conducted in their home. And I've signed this, and I'm going to present this to and call forward Jill McKinn, McKinn, M-C, capital G-I-N-N, of Clear Result of Columbia Gas Audit Program. And Jill, would you please come forward? Several of us have had a chance to, to gain a little bit insight into some of your incentive programs. And I must admit, first I was a little bit suspect. I thought it was all, forgive me, PR, no. But really, this is serious stuff and serious money. And you can, I mean, it's amazing, the staff was briefing me on different aspects of it, and that, how much a person can save by making some changes in their, in their home. I hope you tell us a little bit about that and some of the dollar amounts and so forth. But first, I want to present this to you and your colleagues. Wonderful to have you up here from Columbus, and we appreciate all the good work down in Columbia Gas. And you've been even good neighbors as you worked your way through the neighborhoods here, because sometimes we had to remind you about all this or that and so forth. But you've been, you come back, you haven't been running away from us. So we appreciate that, because it's been quite a process here. We understand that's not necessarily a part of your program, part of Columbia Gas, but in any event, it all fits together there. And we appreciate what you're doing to, and put all this new, these new pipes in town and making it, again, all more energy efficient and safer, so, community, please.
Well, thanks for having me tonight. Just very briefly, I wanted to let you know that we're very, very excited to be working with the City of Bowling Green. It's a great community, and as he mentioned, I've spent quite a bit of time here lately, and I really enjoyed it. Just to put some perspective into the dollar amounts that the community can save, typically the energy audit, although it's a $500 value, we offer it to our customers for $50. However, we have recently, as he mentioned, qualified the City of Bowling Green that just by virtue of being a citizen of Bowling Green, a community member, every single Bowling Green person can get this audit now for $20. So it used to be that if we made recommendations for your home to, for insulation or air sealing measures, the homeowner could get up to 70% off of that insulation and $300 off of a high-efficient furnace. However, now, all Bowling Green residents, the maximum out-of-pocket that resident will pay for insulation and air sealing is $300, even if we recommend thousands of dollars' worth of insulation. And again, you can get $1,000 off of a high-efficient furnace. So one of the reasons, this is, Bowling Green is only the third city in northern Ohio that we've made this qualification for. And a huge factor is because Bowling Green is such an energy-efficient, aware community. And so we really, really appreciate everything that you're doing as a community. I'm spending quite a bit of time up here in the very near future to try to get the word out so all the residents can take advantage of it. And, and you might be getting a postcard in the mail soon, you might see me at the farmer's market or some of the chamber events, and so thank you very much for having us.
Thank you very much, Jill. Mr. President, members of council, that concludes my report, unless you have questions for me.
There are questions for the mayor. Very good, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Municipal Administrator, Ms. Treter.
Good evening. The Bowling Green Police Division is scheduled for an onsite assessment as part of a program to maintain accreditation by verifying the agency, that the agency meets professional standards. This is something we've talked about with you previously. Of course, the accreditation process is something we're very proud of that both police and fire have, but the police are actually going to be accredited onsite next week. So our, our folks have been getting ready for that. It's a three-year process, and so three years in the making. We have some information that we want to share with the community about that. The accreditation is administered by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, also we call it KLEA for short. The accreditation program requires agencies to comply with internationally accepted best practices and standards in four basic areas: policy and procedures, administration, operations, and support services. As part of the onsite assessment, agencies, agency employees and members of the community are invited to offer comments at the public information session that will take place on Tuesday, July 26th at 5:30 PM. That session's going to take place at the Simpson Garden Park Building, 1291 Conyot Avenue. The session will conclude when everyone who, that has signed in has had the opportunity to speak. If you are unable to make that meeting, there is also a call-in period that is going to be offered on that same day between the hours of 1:00 and 3:00 PM. The number to call at that time is 419-352-7459. And we will post this information on our website and send it out through social media as well to let the community know. Agency employees and the public are both offered the opportunity to provide any feedback on our police division. So we wish them the best of luck, chief, and, and your folks at this accreditation. Really, it's very important for our community, the policies, the procedures, the standards that are put in place as part of this are one of the many reasons that we're so proud of our, our police division. And that completes my report this evening.
Questions for Ms. Treter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Planning Director, Ms. Sailor. Questions for Heather. Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Good evening, just a few things. We have lots going on in the parks, so still lots of events, camps, programs, the pool. Weather has been really good for the pool. Sorry about people's grass, but, but the pool is liking it. So check out our website, there's flyers everywhere, social media, all of that, so I won't run through all that. But one thing to highlight that is coming up pretty rapidly is, I want to say, it's the third annual, it might be the second annual, Simpson Garden Park Gardening Symposium, which will be held on July 30th, that's a Saturday, from 9:00 until 4:00. And there are three speakers coming, and I won't run through all that, but they'll be talking on rare seed collection, HUGA culture, and landscape design. And if you have questions about what HUGA culture is, feel free to contact our Natural Resources staff. Other than that, I will tell you, Pokemon Go is really awesome in the fact that a lot of people, and I'm not going to say kids, because college students are adults, but kids and college students and adults are out in the parks in full force, and some maybe don't get out and get active. So we, Parks and Recreation professionals are very excited about it from that standpoint. On the flip side, we do want people to be safe. I have personally witnessed at least one young college student almost walk in front of a car in city park because they're so focused on their camera. So I do want to remind people to be safe, please be safe. I know our staff has noticed some others, and I was just informed today, apparently some people are doing it in their car and while they're driving, and I haven't seen that, but going through the Simpson parking lot at pretty rapid speed. So staff person asked me if they were allowed to say something, and I'm like, yeah, just don't get injured. But, so, I know it's exciting, I haven't tried it myself, but we need to be safe, so. It's cool to catch Pokemon, but life is good and we want to keep people safe, so. And all the rules of the park still apply, so like, don't come in after dark and don't go places you're not supposed to. I know, we've read in the media, some other places have had issues with that as well. And then, as the city's representative to the Bicycle Safety Commission, I just want to remind people that bike safety does not meet in July. So our commission does not meet in July or December. So don't show up tomorrow night at 6:00, because Bike Safety Commission will not be here. Planning on coming. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Questions for Ms. Ottley.
Thanks.
Thank you. To the attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell. Questions for Brian.
Are we all set, Brian, for 99-degree heat this coming weekend, electricity-wise? Going to have plenty of it? Everybody's air conditioner?
Yes.
Be running?
Air conditioner will be running. Yeah, it should not be a problem for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
The parking lot, Lot 2, was paved last week. Stayed closed all weekend. We put some emulsion on the lot today. It's a product we've been using the last couple of years to basically restore the chemical makeup of the asphalt to last longer. I know the average person driving by looks and says, what's going on? There's nothing going on, but the emulsion is down. Takes four days for the emulsion to set in place before we can paint it, otherwise the paint won't stay. So Thursday, we're going to start laying out the striping, Friday get it striped with the goal of opening up on Friday, weather permitting. And I don't, I don't think that's going to rain, it's going to be hot, so. So Lot 2 is moving forward. East Gypsy Lane closed today for that 18-day closure of the section of Gypsy Lane back towards railroad tracks, as for the widening of that section of road. Last Friday, on our 50/50 sidewalk program that we're moving back to now out of Lot 2, we tried an experiment with a product called FlexiPave. And first came to our attention in Yellowstone, they used it in their trails, I'll pass it around, Bob. And its composition is recycled tires, and it's got some stone in there and an emulsion that solidifies it together to make that. We did a small section over on Everly, I'll pass this around as well. Had two sweet gum trees that were perfectly healthy, had Grant look at those, said the trees are fine. The sidewalks that were existing were low, the tree roots right next to the tree had heaved the walks up to be severe trip hazards. So we bought some of this product, it's about $6 a square foot. Had the vendor come up since its first time, explain how to mix it, how to put it down, how to treat it, how to finish it. Let it set up over the weekend, we pulled the forms off today. The benefits are being rubber, not only are you reusing recycled tires, but the water goes through, oxygen goes through the trees. If they move just by the roots over the years, that will flex, in FlexiPave. And the freeze thaw cycles, the ground will go up, as frost goes back out, goes back down, this material will flex, or concrete will break, and then you got it back to a trip hazard again. What's unique out in Yellowstone was, Michelin donated all the tires to the Yellowstone vehicles, and as they got old and wore out, they threw them in a pile, Michelin came, ground them up, put them right back on the trail that she used at Yellowstone. And with all the aquifers out there, that's what they liked about it, and it's a lot of things that we like about it, the same thing, we want that groundwater to get in the ground. And if you're ever in an area where the water is trapped due to maybe it's low, and we can't get the grate up, the water will percolate through. Let's say it's 35 degrees and the sun melts the snow, and the water, it'll go away, where otherwise it may be trapped up against the front of the wall and turn back to ice at night when it gets cold again. So we tried some of that, we think we're going to use it. Like North Maple, for example, we got a lot of trees that have, are mature, they're just fine, but the walks are trip hazards. So where we think we can use this product, we'll mix up a little bit, put it next to the tree, use regular concrete as you get away from the tree, and try to use this product as a, as a way to save the tree and not damage the roots. As a matter of fact, help the moisture get in the ground a little bit. So, so we liked it, went down rather well. Took a little bit longer than regular concrete, just because you got to mix it up, wheelbarrow it over, dump it in, trial it in, where concrete is just coming out of the truck as fast as you can move it. So, so far we like it, and we're going to keep using it and see how it goes over this next winter before we go further.
What's the cost compared to concrete?
Well, it's $6 a square foot, and that's exactly what we charge people for a four-inch walk. The difference is, it takes more labor, because you're mixing up in a mixer right on the street, you get taking a wheelbarrow over, dumping it, and you get about four feet of that, then another four feet, then another four feet, where the concrete, at 10 yards, you can do several hundred feet, and you know, you get that bored in maybe half hour, 45 minutes. This is going, the pace is slower. But the way I look at it is, if it saves you from taking down a perfectly healthy tree for $3,000 or $4,000, not only you lost the tree, but now you got expense taking the tree down. It'd been just quicker to put this FlexiPave down, keep the tree where it is, and get the, the key is to get the grate up. All these old walks over time, due to leaf decay and grass clippings, pretty soon the yards build up, the sidewalks stay down, then as rain comes along, it can't get off. So we're, whenever we do these 50/50 sidewalks, we're jacking those sidewalks up out of the grounds to help get that water shed away, and wherever we get next to a tree, we use the, we use FlexiPave. So that's my report. It's on Everly, too, if you want to go look at it. It's right off of Wooster on the east side.
Interesting product, thanks for looking into that. It seems like there's some really good usage for that, the older parts of town.
Yeah, another interesting aspect downtown, for example, where the tree grates are starting to lift up a little bit. The salesman says you could take the tree grates out, and that one, for example, is a redwood color, and he suggests using that next to the brick band that we have. And instead of having the tree grate there at all, you just put that material in and it would match the sidewalk elevation. As you get close to the tree, you could slope it up to the tree itself, and the water will go right in, and you won't have a tree grate to trip over. It lifts up every spring and winter, it goes up and down. So where that will flex up, then up right back down.
Any idea on the lifespan of that, or the life expectancy?
I don't know, it's fairly new, so we kind of want to see, and I suppose I could go to Yellowstone and see how it's wearing over time. But we, we think a lot, because of being a rubber tire, it's really, it's really going to wear well. My biggest concern is snow removal. If you get the wrong equipment on there, that's, it'll blade in, it might pick it up and lose some of that, but just kind of an education part that we want to, as we go further, we'll get the education, we're out working with Joe, and let people know what it is. So if you see some of that, it's not cold, cold mixed or asphalt, it's a rubber product that is good for the environment.
Great.
Threw by it on Everly a few times, because it's right on my way from, if I'm in town, where I live.
Okay.
I just, blacktop, like.
Yeah, yeah, it's about inch and a half thick, about the same as that. When he showed up, we had about three inches of reveal, and he goes, we'll put some more stone in there, no sense wasting the product. So inch and a half thick. It's, walking on it, you can tell, it's kind of like walking on a high school track, a running track, it's got a little bit of rubber in it compared to the concrete. And there's all different colors, there's green, and, and we did graphite color. I wish there was a color that would resemble sidewalks more, but that would be hard, too white, but we'll give it a try.
Any other questions for Mr. Kraft?
So this doesn't go under the concrete, this is in place of concrete in the areas where it's used? That's great. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Brian.
That completes our official reports. We now move forward with the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I have an ordinance amending and adopting Sections 150.40 and 150.103 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding the zoning code.
Thank you, Bruce.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
From the Community Improvement Committee, we have a resolution adopting and authorizing amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Housing Policy and Procedures Manual, a resolution adopting and authorizing an amended Housing Revolving Loan Fund Program Policy and Procedures Manual, and an ordinance amending and adopting Chapter 94 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding refuse and recycling collection.
Thank you, Daniel. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
Related to the Community Improvement Committee, I just wanted to ask in regard to the language that was presented in our packets, the draft of Chapter 94. At our last meeting, as everyone knows, we asked City Attorney, Mr. Marsh, to draw up some language along certain lines that we described to him at that meeting. And because this is an important topic that we've spent a lot of time on, and there's so much disparity in opinions as to what we should do, I'm not trying to convince anybody tonight or seek opinions as to whether this is the, this is what we're going to pass, but I just wanted to ask if everybody's had a chance to look at that language, and does it reflect accurately what we asked Mr. Marsh to put together? And are, does anyone at this point in time have any changes they wanted to consider for that? I know there was an email, Sandy, that you had suggested a small change to the language, and it's not in the draft of the ordinance that we have in front of us. And I don't know if you wanted to pursue that a little bit, talk about why, exactly what that change was and what your reasoning was behind it. I would say, Mike, that I thought you did an excellent job of putting the language together, very consistent with what we asked, which is not the easiest job in the world. But did anybody have any thoughts? Is the language what you see, what you anticipated getting? Does anybody have any problems with it?
I have a few comments. I'm not very prepared tonight, I figured at the third reading we would, you know, completely parse the issue. But I feel that the location issue was well captured by the draft that we received. I have a lot of concerns about the penalty, the concept that was presented, but again, I would prefer to speak about that.
Okay.
At greater length in the next meeting.
And I, too, have concerns about the penalty section, because it does appear if we're going to be confiscating these bins, we're going to have to enter people's property in order to confiscate them. At the beginning of Chapter 94, it says that no city employees are to enter anyone's private property for the purpose of picking anything up, and yet, it says it several times, and yet, if we confiscate, I don't know how we're going to get them without entering someone's property. So that concerns me. And I think you're going to hear from me to the bitter end, I just don't think it's going to work as far as enforcement. Since we have drafted it, and as I drive around, because that's what I do for a living, I drive around and look at houses, I'm seeing where it's going to be very hard to enforce. And some people who have their bins very well-hidden would be in violation, because they have them very well-hidden, but they're in front of their house, you can't see them. And I have had a little meeting with the mayor and shared what I captured in one morning, but I continue to see more and more problems as I drive around, that enforceability is going to be a major problem. And that's why I've been pushing, just say, make them so they can't be seen. Just put your bins where no one can see them, do the best job you can, doesn't have to be perfect, easy to enforce. Couldn't be easier, we don't have to say, so many feet on the side of the house, they have to be back, or whatever. Just try your best to hide those bins, and we can be happy about it.
Sandy, did you want to see the language you suggested added tonight? No?
I'm not sure which, what you're referring to.
Oh, I had an email that said that you had suggested some, a small change in 9405A, something about where it says that on non-collection days, all refuse containers shall be stored within enclosed area, something about screening. Doesn't sound familiar?
That wasn't me. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay, I'll let that one go then.
But I would support screening to hide them, just as long as they're out of everyone's sight.
You know, and since we're venturing into it, I would like to say that, for the sake of the audience who hasn't seen it, the penalty concept is to warn people, wherever the placement winds up being, that remains to be seen. But the proposed penalty is to warn the person that has the can in the wrong place, and subsequently then confiscate them. And, you know, I imagine the city can rewrite the beginning, and we could do that, but to me, that's just a very laborious way to address it. Other cities basically just inform people, and when they don't address it, they find them, which is a lot speedier concept.
Initially, I liked the idea of confiscating, until I saw it in writing and realized, uh-oh, you've got to enter the property to do that, I don't know how we're going to be able to do that. do this. But you know, to confiscate means you don't have any means of getting rid of your trash and you'd better comply or you're stuck with your own trash. So I, I like that.
Or you throw it in a dumpster, I mean, you do.
Or you go to someone else's dumpster and throw it in, yeah. Yeah, they have their own remedies, some people. But anyway, that is something we're probably going to have to look at.
Laurie, wasn't the confiscation going to be at curbside with the truck?
That's correct. If it's in the right of way, then we would have the right to take that from the right of way.
We're not gonna walk onto anybody's property and take their can.
This, you know, we're, we're trying to reflect council's language and, um, you know, the enforcement will, will have to be part of the discussion, so I don't know if Mike has anything else about that, but.
I guess I'd ask, what do you suspect would happen or how are we going to enforce it? Let's say somebody has their cans on the side of their house, but the lid's thrown back wide open and trash bags are piled two feet high or spilling over the sides, what do we do in that situation?
And second time?
I mean, we'd have to, they're not, the cans aren't on the right of way.
Second time, I guess we have to wait until they were on the right way if we wanted to take them or we could keep warning them, I suppose.
It's an issue to consider or think about at least.
John, let me just.
But we also don't want to make it a crime.
And I agree with you on that. It's just the way it's worded, I don't know how there could be the confiscation clause.
And what does a warning mean though, if you get nine of those and you don't do anything? I mean, it's, it really kind of renders it fairly meaningless.
You have to, you have to do it on a case-by-case basis. I don't think there's any way to talk about this without talking about on a case-by-case basis. For example, Bob's description, if somebody puts their can at the curb with bags falling off all over the place, then we can take the can, it's on our property. Okay? Uh, but that's right, if it's up by the house and it's that way, we're probably gonna have to give them a warning, but I guess you have to assume that if it's up by the house that way, it's gonna end up out at the street that way.
If it's in front of their door, which a lot of people do. In certain parts of our city, it's there indefinitely until they move it to the, to the collecting, collection point.
In front of their door, eventually it comes to the right of way.
Where it'll be in the right of way and someone will pick it up.
We own the right of way, so then we can pick it up. That's what's going to happen. Because there isn't a way to find somebody, as you put it, without citing them with an offense first. That's a crime.
Is a civil infraction a crime or, or is there?
No, but you know, there's, there isn't, that's not a fine, that's a civil infraction, which, uh, we do call for that, but uh, yeah.
Well, I.
All right, whatever you want, but when we talked about this before, I said, my understanding is you don't want it to be a crime, so I will write it on there where it's not a crime, but that's, that's what I said. We can, we can write it and make it a misdemeanor, you know.
I think focusing on the point of pickup is probably a pretty good way to approach this, but John, I would also say in, in general, we're gonna have to have, uh, some trust in the administration to figure out how to enforce the ordinance that we come up with. I mean, it's, it's fine for us to contribute to, uh, the discussion, but I, and also I want to say, John, I, I hope that you are, you feel that we can push this through tonight. Unless something really tough comes up, I really hope that we can be done with this tonight. I know we're not gonna vote on it tonight, but I'd like to have the language pretty well nailed down.
I don't think I can do that tonight, Bruce. I think the way it's written right now is it will be addressed at the curb and the curb only and that will not solve a single issue, including the most egregious ones. It will just render this a long, kind of pointless discussion, is my opinion. So, you know, that's my stance. Um, so I'm certainly not gonna agree tonight that the penalty as written, uh, is satisfying at all to myself. It does nothing to the issue that we've been talking about since September.
I think if they don't, if they lose their can though, they're gonna get the message that they've got to, they've got to change things.
You know, my thought is if they're leaving their can in, in a place that everyone would agree is not okay, uh, there is debate on what's okay, but there are areas that everyone has agreed are, are really, uh, unfortunate and egregious. By the time they move them out to the curb, they are doing what I do, they move them out to the curb, a truck comes up and picks it up. What are they doing that day? I mean, we're gonna pick them up and say, two days ago, you had it in a bad place? I mean, I think that's really unrealistic. Um, in Kent, um, I don't know if they call it criminal or not, they call it a ticket. Uh, and basically, uh, their workers go around and say, your can is on your porch, that's not okay with us in Kent, $10 fine. Your can is surrounded by litter, that's not okay, $10 fine. These are things that are effective. Um, confiscating a can to me is not, it's, it's not even physically a good idea. Uh, these are gonna be heavy cans that are gonna be lifted onto a truck, uh, by perhaps two people and just, uh, you know, again, you know, you're asking that we accept the language tonight, uh, I can't.
Mike, you're talking about it not being, not wanting it to be a crime. Educate me a little bit, if, if it were a civil infraction, I heard you say a civil infraction is not a crime. Could it be a civil, could it be a civil infraction rather than picking up the cans?
Whatever you want it to be, you know.
Well, how, I mean, but does that address your concern about it not wanting it to be a crime?
Well, when I said that, I thought I was reading your minds when I said, I'm gonna write this so it's not a crime, is that what everyone wants? And I thought everyone said that was the case. When someone's can is confiscated, we already do that when people are violating rules that we have now. It isn't just that they lose their can, they have to pay, I think it's 50 bucks to get it back. It's actually more severe than, than what you're talking about, giving somebody a $10 ticket or something. But a civil infraction, that's why we created those, is not in the criminal court, that's right.
Mike, how are civil infractions enforced?
We have, we have, well, first, a person would receive a civil citation and then we have a, I guess for lack of a better term, we have a magistrate that, that hears any contested, uh, issues or people can pay the civil penalty and, so it's, it's somewhat similar to a judicial proceeding, it's not a judge, it's not court. Right now, we have a magistrate, it's, uh, Megan Dunlop does it right now. And periodically, they schedule, I don't know, whenever they have a certain mass of those, they schedule her, and people can come and contest them if they want to or they can pay the civil penalty.
Like snow removal, is it?
Grass, all that stuff that we do.
Yeah, it's in line with.
It's a similar process.
If it's in line with what we do, we still are in problems, um, it seems like that would work.
Laurie, if you see a can violation on Tuesday, and you make a note of it, can you pick up the can on Thursday and then keep the can?
You know, honestly, because, you know, this, this has not been passed by city council and, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, we haven't formulated a specific enforcement plan because we don't know what law it is that you're going to pass.
Was it your anticipation, Laurie, that with the way it was drafted here, uh, who would issue the warnings and who would make the decision to pick up the can? Would, would the civil, I take it the civil infraction, the code enforcement officer we have wouldn't be involved unless the ordinance were written differently, right?
Right, I mean, that's some of our, been our internal discussion, you know, our, really, our biggest hope, honestly, is that there's gonna be a massive educational effort to get folks into compliance with this. Um, you know, we, we hope that, that we have community cooperation, we have our partners in town, um, and that, you know, BGSU works with us, uh, for students who live off campus and for others in town. Somebody doesn't, isn't aware of it, that's why you had a warning clause in there so that you have an opportunity to get in there, um, you know, and, and get into compliance on that. But again, because this has just been draft language, we don't have a specific enforcement plan in, in place, the law honestly just hasn't been put into effect yet to, to have us do that. I will remind you, of course, that, you know, our staffing is, is tight. Um, you know, there are a lot of priorities in this town, there are a lot of things, we have one, and he's more, you know, zoning code enforcement officer, we have our public works department who is doing a lot of activities right now, they're out fixing, you know, parking lots and sidewalks and so forth, so there are a lot of important priorities in the community.
Right now, I think what you'd have is the appeal process that's called for and this, you have, it goes through the administrator, you'd have to say that, um, somebody that is the administrator's designate will be the enforcing agent, uh, yet to be determined person. But, uh, the way that is written, the appeal, if you want to appeal, is to the municipal administrator.
You mean to apply for an exemption, Laurie? You're talking about the exemption clause?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Well, it's.
So I guess I'd have to say that, it hasn't been determined, but whoever the enforcement person is will be a designated administrator. The way it's presently written.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I sure hope we consider civil, uh, infraction. You know, Bruce, as you just verbalized it, can is strewn in front of the door on Monday, Tuesday it's out at the curb, Tuesday there's nothing to even take a picture of, it's, it's what most people do with their can on Tuesdays. So, you know, I think if, if we're serious about this, it, um, you know, I, I sure hope the council considers it a civil infraction. Again, the location to me is even secondary to this aspect. To do this with a, an unenforceable penalty is, would be really unfortunate. And um, the manpower is an issue, I mean, picking up cans is, would be a manpower issue also, but, you know, I think people are gonna call these in, these aren't gonna be just driven around and enforced, that's how things are done. Um, and people are probably gonna pick the most egregious ones, you know, I think that'll be fair to say. And, and I think if I'm doing it and I get a letter, I'm not gonna do it anymore. And I, I think that's how you, you clean up the town, um, by picking up their can two days after they did something bad, it's kind of like you punish people when their behavior's happening, not two days after when they're doing what everyone else is doing. Um, so again, I just implore that we, we, you know, we, we think about this and, and come up with a penalty, uh, that is enforceable and would be a teaching moment. Uh, the ones that are gonna be called in are gonna be the truly egregious ones, uh, and unless somebody is just stubborn as a box of rocks, they're gonna start being educated. So, that's my.
I would remind people that, well, I can't speak for you, so I'm not going to, but our purpose here is to clean up our town, to make us proud of our town, to follow some of the steps in the land use plan, several of the steps in the land use plan, and to add value to each and every one of our homes. That's money, that's money in our pockets. And, and invite people to want to live in our town because we're a neat and clean town. So I think if we're going to get away with allowing trash to sit on the side of a house with the lid open and things strewn all around it, six days a week, and on the seventh day, maybe we'll do, be able to do something about it, we've accomplished nothing. Six days a week, we have a mess. We're always gonna have a mess in certain neighborhoods on a Monday, after a party, Saturday or Sunday, after a party. So it's gotta be, I think it has to be enforced.
You're aware, do send a communication, that's the very first step.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't matter what day it is, it doesn't matter if it's at the street or not, to send a notice or a warning, that's the first step.
Yeah, but that, yeah, I'm, I'm fully aware of that, I have read it. But, you know, what are we going to do to have people learn fast? What is gonna make us change our culture here? It has been a culture that lets things go and what's gonna change it? That's what I'm for. It's not the amount of the fine, it's clean up the problems we have in our town.
It, it seems, Mike, like the, the first step, the warning can take place no matter where the trash container might be, if it's spotted, the, you know, the lid's open, whatever. Yeah, so that, the first step is okay and I fully support a warning as the first step. The problem seems to come with the second step.
Mm-hmm, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Sandy and John are talking that we may not be able to enforce it, that for people who that doesn't impress or get through to, then we've got a problem with the second step. I mean, I haven't heard from the rest of you, but how did the rest feel about making it a civil infraction so that with the second offense, uh, that they get a fine basically rather than the cans picked up?
You spoke well for me, I'm not worried about the letter. Gonna have a lot of letters going out at first and it's gonna take up some staff's time, uh, but yeah, I want to punch with, with this too, so it does make a difference. Not a brutal punch.
Mike, Daniel, Teresa, what do you think about the civil infractions route?
I, I agree, there will be an enforcement problem, I mean, a lot of people are gonna be impacted by this, it's more than just the most egregious. Um, saying that we think it will mostly be enforced upon the most egregious people, there are gonna be a lot more people, a lot more people impacted than that because there are so many houses, um, so many houses where people keep their trash cans on the driveway, by the garage, um, that they keep their lids down, they keep them neat and tidy, these are well-kept houses, but they keep their trash cans on the driveway by the garage and there are gonna be a lot of people impacted more than the most egregious.
If somebody calls those in, and last week you mentioned there were thousands, if there's 2,000s, there's 5,000 places here, that's 40% of Bowling Green keeps them by their garage? I don't think so.
I didn't give a number.
It's like a hundred, you said thousands, Teresa, thousands.
I said there, well, I believe there was a count.
You gotta look at what area you're talking about, if you talk the living, just the lift, start off with the smallest size, the living portion of the house, I think there's maybe 50 to 100 houses that have cans in front of the living portion of their house. If you expand it to include garages, in front of garages, now you're up to a few hundred, I think. I'll just make a rough number, 500.
I think that's fair.
Okay? Then if you include, but if you include the side yards, now I'm pretty confident in saying you're at least over a thousand, uh, maybe up to 50, I wouldn't be surprised if it's in the neighborhood of 1,500. So as you expand the size, the number goes up.
Sure.
If we're talking about the way this is drafted, which would exclude the cans anywhere in front of the residence, including garages, my estimate, rough, very rough estimate from driving around and looking, would be, we'd be talking about a few hundred places, maybe as few as 300, maybe as many as 5 or 600.
And I, and I'm all for the warning, I'm, I'm not here to, you know, fine people. If there's 500, 600, 400, a warning will fix 75% of it. And then the rest of it, you slowly deal with.
In the, in the majority of those cases I've seen where the, where the cans are in front of the garage, it would not be hard to just move them around to the side of the garage. And I think there'll be less of a problem, that they will not be as offensive visibly if that were to occur. For some people, they're, depending on the configuration of their property, like I mentioned, a lady I know that has a fence that goes around her property from the, you know, the corner of the house on each side and around and there's no gate near the driveway, you would have to have the fence torn down and have a gate installed and able, in order to be able to get the cans to her side yard, I think that kind of person applies for an exemption, probably gets it. The exemption clause can solve those kinds of problems. So, you know, that's, that's what I think we're looking at, but in terms of the enforcement, I'm, again, I, I guess I'd, Mike, if, if we were to go the civil infractions route after the warning, do you have any reason to say that would be a huge mistake or there's a huge problem associated with it other than the manpower issue, how much can the code enforcement officer do?
And nobody elected me, so I, I won't judge it, but it's probably a 60-day process, that's if someone appeals to, to a hearing. I mean, it's not immediate.
Mm-hmm, that's a good point to make.
How many people appeal on the snow removal and grass cutting? Is it half, less than half?
More on the snow do than on the grass.
Because they have a better excuse to appeal, maybe.
Well, it's, I don't know, you get. Well, it's, I don't know, you get, you know, I shoveled it this morning in the white balloon, and then you came.
Well, we get, we get those, we get those lists or two every, ever, after every spring of people that haven't paid the fine, and we have to put it on the property taxes. And we've all seen how many there are, I mean, sometimes there's 30, 40, 50.
Let's play devil's advocate here for a little bit, for just a second.
John, you talked about wanting to make it a civil infraction, um, but yet, and one of the reasons for saying you wanna do that is you wanna punch, um, associated with-
I didn't use the word punch, but, but-
I'm the puncher.
Okay, excuse me. Um, you know, I understand, we want some teeth associated with it, right?
We want teeth, yes, we wanna make it have a purpose.
And I get that. Um, I, I'm curious, um, it's my understanding that if we make it a civil infraction, it's appealed, even if the, even if the, the guilty party loses their appeal, then, if, if they don't pay, then it goes to the end of the year and we attach it to their tax rolls, correct? So, I think that there's some question about how effective a civil infraction's gonna be too, you know, based on that. So I'm, I'm getting back to the, the, coming up with the mechanism to confiscate the can as being a more, um, effective, immediate, uh, uh-
But when do you see them being confiscated, Mike? I mean, let's say somebody just throws it in their front door, like, the hundred do, we come up with that number. There, there's nothing that's gonna happen to them, they're gonna get a letter occasionally. Then when they roll it out to the curb, it's gonna look as neat as Daniel Gordon's, there's nothing to tell them then. You know, it's like, what are you taking then? You know, it's like the can is in the, in the right of way, that's, that's the process, the truck comes by and picks it up, then they take it back to the house and slop it on the porch. So, you know, what's the gain? Um, there's no gain whatsoever, you know, I mean, we're, you know, we're not gonna say, here it is Wednesday, your can is nice as Daniel Gordon's, yesterday it was bad, we're taking it. I can't even buy that, I mean, I can't even think that'll happen.
Okay, um, and I can't argue that, I don't know, nobody knows, but I have another question, I've heard of some communities where they have a mechanism in place for situations like these, where, um, as far as collection of an infraction, I mean, John would say that we wanna fine somebody. I've heard that there are communities where they attach that fine to a utility bill or some other mechanism like that, which is a more, obviously would be a more immediate consequence. Do we have anything at our disposal, um, to consider something like that?
I can't think of anything, where are we, where are we attached to, uh, to the utility bills? In terms of what you described, John, again, we're talking about enforcing something in the abstract here, but right now, if we get a complaint about snow, or we get a complaint about grass, first an employee takes a picture before we start the enforcement process, and I have to think that if you describe some guy that's got his trashcan on his porch on Saturday, and the city gets a complaint, they take a picture of it, the fact that it's not there on Thursday when it's out at the street doesn't make it less, I mean, we still, they'd be put on some kind of a list to grab the can when they're going by.
That's like, you know, saying, you know, Saturday I was walking down the street with an open bottle, and here it is Thursday, and you know you do, I guess, I mean, it's in history by then.
I'm just giving you suggestions, I, I think you want something immediate that will work. I'm concerned that with the civil infractions, to be honest with you, if you look at the list Bob describes of the taxpayers that we put on every year, you ever notice it's almost always the same ones? You ever notice that? So, I, you know.
Yeah, we will probably have the same ones who don't-
Well, so what's the goal?
Clean up Bowling Green.
Well, then.
That's my suggestion.
Couple of things on mine, first, John, I'd like to thank you for alerting the public to my great practices when it comes to refuse collection.
I never said Saturday, Daniel.
Yeah.
Can you draft that in the ordinance, Mike?
Uh, this is a question for, uh, Bob and John, but do you either of you really remember the breakdown of the communities that we looked at independently when it comes to the penalty? Um, 'cause frankly, it's, it slipped my mind, um, there was some variation, but I don't remember exactly whether there was a, you know, a preponderance of one particular penalty mechanism being used across the board.
Oh, I, I think the preponderance was that people got fined if they violated the ordinance.
Okay.
I agree with that, and I forget the amounts, but I think, and Kent is the one I'm the most conversant in, but I think a fine was certainly the, the concept.
Okay, thank you. Because I don't really want to draw this out, but you know, that's one way we could do this, is we could, you know, follow up with the phone calls that we made earlier and see how well those penalty mechanisms are working out for the officials in Kent and other cities. Um, again, I'm, I'm sort of reluctant to do that because I don't want to draw this out, on the other hand, maybe that would give us some data to work with, I don't know.
Well, we have two more readings, so I'm happy to draw it out to the full process.
At the next meeting, and then we'd still be ready to vote on it on the 15th.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't have a huge problem with, with waiting, I just, um, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I think, I think we've raised it as an issue, and I, I think, John, you do have a legitimate point, there could be a fair number of situations where somebody's in blatant violation of the ordinance, but because the can is not in the right of way at the time, that there's no, at least immediate penalty. Uh, I, I see some merit in the other side too, that you could, you, you know, you take a picture, you put them on the list on the next collection day, you take the can, but then I think that person might be greatly offended, as I put my cans out to be collected, they're sitting there where they're supposed to be, the lid's closed, and they took my cans away. Well, here's the picture from five days ago, eh, I think some people would be offended by that. It's sort of like, it reminds me, I guess the thing I was thinking about as some of you were talking, where, was the, were the speed cameras in Toledo, and the red light cameras. People drive around and then, you know, a couple of weeks later, a ticket for $120 shows up in their mailbox. Just remember a letter to the editor I saw in The Blade a couple of days ago, where some guy got one in Pennsylvania, and coming, came to Toledo to visit the university with his daughter, he said, "I'm never coming back to Toledo." He certainly felt greatly offended that they enforced it, and that kind of delayed man. So I think there's something of an analogy. It would be interesting to see what some of, to have a better handle on what these other communities do in terms of enforcing it. You know, I think we, we've, we've got the issues pretty well identified in terms of placement, and we do have to have a majority of us be willing to go along with one, the version that was drafted, or some other version. Uh, but I do see that enforcement could use a little more examination, and perhaps by the next meeting, uh, that, uh, we'll see, I guess, my, my suggestion would be that we, we wait until then, and, uh, if we have further direction for Mike, give it to him at that time.
If we go that route, can we get it done before school starts?
I think we still end up, we still end up voting on August 15th, just like we were going to anyway, not trying to slow the process down at all, we make that decision at the next meeting, and then we've got an ordinance ready to vote on, on the 15th, I mean, we go ahead and have the second reading at the next meeting. We, you know, we can amend the ordinance at any point in time, and on the 15th, we're voting on something.
I'd also like to consider the, at, at our next meeting, consider the option of giving the, the second and third readings that night, 'cause I think that although you're right, we would vote on it the 15th, I think it's only a couple days before the term begins. So I think it is important to maybe, if, if we're gonna do this, let's get it done, let's get the information disseminated, get it in the hands of BGSU, and it can be, uh, communicated to, you know, incoming students, and, and we have an opportunity to educate people before everybody gets here for the start of the term, so I just throw that out for consideration, that if we're gonna, we're gonna do this, that we give it, uh, that, that thought, possibly.
I think that's a possibility, we'd have, I think we'd have, we'll have to wait and see on August 1st, what we come back with in terms of enforcement.
Yeah, I don't wanna make a commitment now.
If Mike has to draft additional language, then I think we've probably gotta wait until the 15th.
Perhaps.
Yeah, I think it's premature to make that decision tonight, that we're gonna vote on it next time.
But it's a long to keep in mind, if we could do it earlier, it'd be better.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna force it, just to force it for a date, we're not ready.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should, um, uh, at least the three of us should commit to following up with the officials that we spoke to, you know, I think the reason that this didn't really pop up before is because, um, at least as far as my experience as well, when I talk to officials in other communities, um, they've had so few examples of where they actually had to cite somebody over the years, um, that enforcement didn't really pop up as a big issue.
Mm-hmm. We know, uh, Sylvania only had, what, 46, 48 exemptions, people who couldn't do it, and everyone else was able to do it.
And it might have been Sylvania, um, but one official told me that they hadn't had to cite anybody in five years, so.
That's interesting, Kent, actually, uh, it's just been there about nine or 10 months, and what the worker I spoke to there said was, he's seeing great improvements in the community, and that means that they're probably enforcing it less as those months have worn on, but-
Right.
You know, I, I think it was significant and, uh, quickly educated the public.
I think we know what to do.
Great, thank you. Um, are there additional council committee reports this evening?
Ed, Mr. Osbacher, from the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, I'd like to make some comments about some of the activities we've been involved with for some time now. Four main points, uh, first point is that we are continuing to move forward slowly and deliberately with planning a variety of improvements for Bowling Green. The council, the mayor, and the administrative staff, with input from various citizens, are implementing several actions as directed by the land use section of the comprehensive master plan. For example, we have rezoned a number of properties near downtown along East Wooster Street to the B5 type, which should help with mixed-use revitalization along this corridor. Further to the east, we anticipate a great deal of street improvements with roundabouts at the I-75 interchange, and a long stretch of complete street type enhancements along East Wooster. Item two, we have moved forward with the selection of consultants who will help us revitalize neighborhoods. Over the course of the next year, we will identify specific actions to that end. This will most certainly include, by way of example, public-private partnerships, coordinated financial incentives, the conversion of some subdivided houses back to single-family owner-occupied status, and active resident participation in planning and implementing these and other items. Item three, I think the garbage can issue is a significant aspect of neighborhood improvement. Aesthetic regulations are more elusive than we might first expect, and there are other aesthetic issues that we might consider, such as building maintenance, landscaping, excessive clutter, and so forth. A very thorny issue which many people mention is signs. Signs have been discussed for at least 40 years here. As our codified ordinances state in Section 150, and I quote, "Without adequate regulations and design standards, signs are a nuisance," end quote. We have to pick the items that we can most likely be successful with. We might wanna pursue a maintenance code, or rethink our sign policies, but this could be very time-consuming, so I would like to focus on the big picture of housing revitalization. And let me just say, John, I'm not disparaging particular issues like this at all, I'm just, my, I'm speaking for myself, I am focused more on some broader housing questions. And I'm gonna read through a list here, and I'm almost done, uh, but I'm trying to emphasize the point that we are not the first group of people to think about housing improvements. I'm gonna read this from the 2009 update of the Housing Section of the Master Plan. As I quickly read through the list, I would ask people to think of the level of progress that has or has not been made in neighborhood improvement since 2009. This goes from A to O. Worker incentives to buy houses in Bowling Green, a revolving loan fund, senior housing, a housing trust fund, code enforcement, CDBG housing rehab loans, neighborhood associations, student involvement in neighborhoods, community development corporation, affordable housing, historic preservation, aging apartment buildings, green initiatives, conversion of rental properties, maintenance standards. A lot of good people have worked to improve neighborhoods for a long time. Many residences, residents and businesses have made tremendous improvements at great expense over the years as well. I know this was a bit lengthy, but I wanted people to know that we are not sitting on our thumbs.
Thank you, Bruce. Additional council committee reports. Okay, seeing none, we move forward to the section on our agenda where we welcome lobby visitation. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to address council, we ask you to do so at this time by approaching the microphone and clearly stating your name and address for the record.
A question that I do have, just in terms of being proactive with the garbage can, people knowing the ordinances, whenever we get the ordinance, is that I had raised, I think, in the letter that I sent to council, um, and I don't know if it was discussed and decided that it, it wasn't something that would work, but the idea with, since we have such a high renter population where people are turning over, is it possible that in a rental agreement, the, um, it could be included in there that I have, I have, I have read and understand the code for garbage can placement? I don't know if that can, maybe that's a legal question, but if that could be included in a contract, um, so that we're proactive about it, if it's renters that are saying, oh, we didn't, we didn't know.
Margaret, there is an association, um, and I'm embarrassed, I, the name is not coming to me, but a, an association of, of rental? Wood County, is it Wood County Apartment Association? Okay, that's the name I'm trying to come up with. That is probably the better place to get, get an answer, um, because it's the property owners that draft the, um, agreement, and, and they would have to want that put in there. I would think it would protect property owners, so that they might want to have that in there. But I'm not an attorney, and I'm not a property, a, a renter, so, a landlord, so, um, I think that might be a good place to go, and I, I can help you find, Rob Holly used to be the head, is he still the head? Rob Holly, from, uh, Stadium View?
I think the sign is involved.
Ryan Holly, though, Stadium View Apartments.
Yeah, I was thinking that one.
Oh, well-
Again, about being just proactive to do what we can to try to save greed.
Planning.
Yeah, that might be a good topic for us to discuss at our next meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
How are there others? Okay, seeing none, we move forward with the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading, Resolution Number 3633 for first reading, resolution adopting and authorizing amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Housing Policy and Procedures Manual. Resolution Number 3634 for first reading, resolution adopting and authorizing amended Housing Revolving Loan Fund Program Policy and Procedures Manual. Ordinance Number 8592 for first reading, ordinance providing for supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give that ordinance, which I didn't catch the number of, okay?
8592.
8592 at second and third readings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Kay, would you please call a roll?
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8592 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8- Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
Move to adopt ordinance 8592.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8592 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8593 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Sections 140.5, no, 150.40 and 150.103 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding the zoning code.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I'd like to schedule a public hearing for ordinance 8593 on September 6th at 6:45.
Recorded, Kay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
Ordinance Number 8594 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Chapter 94 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green regarding refuse and recycling collection. Legislation for second reading. Resolution Number 3632 for second reading. Resolution amending the city of Bowling Green financial and debt policy. Ordinance Number 8527 for second reading. Ordinance accepting the utility easement from Mauer Rentals LLC. Ordinance Number 8528 for second reading. Ordinance accepting utility easements from 115 East Court Street LLC, and 223 Rentals LLC, and Sky BG Properties LLC. Legislation for third reading. Resolution Number 3630 for third reading. Resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2017.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
Move we adopt Resolution 3630?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3630 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8521 for third reading. Ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
Move we adopt ordinance 8521?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8521 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8522 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03A of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relating to pay for school police interns and civil infractions hearing officer.
President.
Mr. McComber.
Move we adopt ordinance 8522?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8522 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8523 for third reading. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 6.2 acres of land in center township, Wood County, Ohio, from Stephen M. and Marcia L. Subert petitioners.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move to adopt ordinance 8523.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8523 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8524 for third reading. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of R1 single-family residential for approximately 6.2 acres of land located on the south side of Napoleon Road between 1502 and 1518 Napoleon Road, recently annexed to the city as petitioned for by Stephen and Marcia Subert.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move to table ordinance 8524 until the public hearing on August 1st.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8524 is tabled.
Ordinance Number 8525 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 150.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding zoning code definitions and declaring an emergency.
Excuse me just a minute here. So, we're gonna need to table this one as well. I move that we table ordinance 8525.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8525 is tabled. That completes the items on our agenda this evening. Are there any other items to come before council? Seeing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.